Hi everybody, welcome. I'm Chad Blair with Honolulu Civil Beat. Thank you for coming out tonight for our elections pop-up. Just a couple of quick things, we are not live. This is being recorded. That is a recorder, that is a video recorder. And we will be posting this on our website within a day or two. We have been posting all of our election pop-up forums so that people can have the chance to review them. And believe me, people have been reviewing them, especially as the election approaches. It's very close. A couple of news items if you haven't already heard, and you may even have more information than I do. Let's see if we can keep that door closed as best as possible. As I understand it from Hawaiian Electric, the outages have stopped. They didn't even have to implement those public safety power shut-offs. And I heard that FEMA canceled the red flag warning as well, so that's good news. I do understand there was a Lahaina rebuilding forum tonight. Leo, our reporter here on Maui, was supposed to be there, and that was canceled. And I know at least one or two council members or candidates are going to be there. I understand there's also a Makawau Town Hall, is that right? And is it true, the Maui Department of Water Supply meeting on aquifers in Hana, is that right as well? So, we didn't plan it that way. We set this thing up really months in advance, and we're just grateful that you took time out for your schedule, given all the things that are going on right now around your county. This is not a debate, and unlike all the other forums we've had, we're not going to be able to do one-on-ones. We're not going to be able to take direct questions from the audience on our index cards. There's just too many of you. Twelve of the 16 candidates running for Maui County Council are here tonight. One of them is running a little bit late, and that's fine. We'll make room for her when she gets here. Or maybe it's a him. I should tell you that. If I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. But one of the reasons we do this is we're way too Honolulu-centric. I recognize that we're Honolulu Civil Beat, but as you all know here on Maui, we care very much about the entire state. And since what happened in Lahaina over a year ago, we have actually rented a house not too far from here in Wailuku. And I'll be staying there tonight, actually. And some of our other team will be staying at hotel. But that gives you an indication of how important it is for us to get out of our Oahu-centric bubble. We hear it all the time. On Friday, we will be on Kauai. Similarly, large field of Kauai County Council candidates. And then next week, we have the very last forum. It's for OHA, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And there's a couple of contested races there. But thank you for supporting us, and we're just really glad to get out and hear from you. It's just not the same being behind your computer screen on Oahu, waiting for the phone to ring and to hear from some of you. We are asking you to silence your phones, and we are asking you to, if you want, help yourself to food and water. There's even some sodas and juice. And afterwards, when we're pal, if you want to take some stuff with you, that'd be great. We got the advice that maybe it's a good idea then to take whatever we have left over at Maui Memorial. Is that right? The nurses said they might be able to take it. And thank you for that suggestion as well. The restroom key, it's not a key, it's a code. 9500. The people in the Civil Beat t-shirts behind me, Asia and Megan, have the code with them. There's also Wi-Fi, but I'm not going to bother to give that out. They have that information as well. We're going to try and go for about an hour. If you do the math, I'm going to give you four minutes each to give us what we call your stump speech. This is not Bret Baer on Fox with Kamala Harris, which I heard was a pretty good forum today. I haven't watched it, I've just been kind of watching the social media feed. So this, in that sense, will be unlike all the other forums. I wish we did have time for that. We would like to be able to finish in enough time, probably seven-ish. So that if anybody wants to come up and ask questions, if you directly, they can. We may run a little bit over, but we're going to try and stick to about an hour's time. Okay, is there anything else I didn't mention? I think I got everything here. I'll be asking the questions, but really the questions are, the answers are to come from you. Who are you? Why are you running for office? What are the key issues that are important to you? I may have a follow-up, and I may not. Megan is back there with a time limit, so when the one-minute mark comes up, she's going to raise it. And I'll remind you gently, be civil. We're not here to attack each other. You can do that outside, you can do that in Maui County somewhere else. We're not paying for that, I'm sorry. That's just not what we're here for. And that's for something to address later. And without further ado, I do want to say hello to, in random order, we're going to go in this order. Kelly King, Jocelyn Cruz, Yuki Le Sugimura, R.G., Carol Lee Kamakona, John Pele, Lorian Quintus, which I think is a man, not a woman, is that right? My apologies. See, we really got to get out of Oahu. Is running a little bit late. Alice Lee, Nora Boone, Thomas Cook, James Forrest, Tasha Kama, Kiani Rollins Fernandez. Did I miss anybody? Did anybody else join in late? And then there were four others as well. And something that we also don't do in Oahu, we don't have runoffs if somebody gets 50% or more of the vote. And so we have no mayor race, we have no county council race, we have no prosecutor's race. I personally would love to see your forum format adopted by our elections. As well, all of you, vote for everybody regardless of the island, or what part of Maui, or Lenai, or Molokai. I wish that was the case on Oahu as well, but I think that's a good thing. But if you feel otherwise, that's okay. So without further ado, as I said, randomly sorted. Kelly King, we're going to ask you to come up first and give us your four-minute stump speech.
Aloha everybody, and thank you for being here, thank you for holding this, Chad. And I am really glad you're renting a house here, because now you get to see what's happening with our rents and the need for affordable housing on this island. But I want to start by, a lot of you know me, and you know I've been around for a very long time. I've lived in Kihei for over 40 years. My husband and I just celebrated our 41st anniversary in September. And so, along with all the other things I'm doing, my family life is very sustainable. But a lot of the things I'm doing, I've raised two kids here, put them through the schools here, and they've gone through college. They both got their master's degree at UH Manoa. And so Maui is a very important place to me. It's our home. I've served four years on the State Board of Education, and I've worked on children's issues for many, many years from the time my kids were little. And I got while building playgrounds, specifically the one up in Kula that was in the new park, that was new at the time, next to the school. I was talked into running for the Board of Education. And while working on some of the issues here in Kihei with the Kihei Community Association, I was talked into running for the County Council back in 2016. One of our biggest issues was the community did not want the Mega Ball, and there were developers that were determined to force that upon us. And you know, a lot of us weren't paying attention back in the 80s and 90s, but South Maui was the fastest-growing community in the state of Hawaii. We had nothing but dirt and noise and construction everywhere. And we were paying attention, and so much got built over our wetlands. And that's why we're having all the flooding we're having now, because we went from 200-plus acres of wetlands down to less than 25. So one of the things I worked on, I served three terms on the County Council, and one of my biggest issues was the wetlands. We have three groups that we got funded for wetland restoration. We passed a wetland restoration and preservation bill. Thank you to the council for supporting me on that bill. And we had some great projects that were going, and this last year had funding cut. So watching that be cut, there's no more climate action committee, which is what I was doing on the council. We passed a lot of environmental protection bills. And we also passed climate action bills, energy-wise, you know, requiring net zero. Houses, our facilities over 5,000 square feet and things like that. But I'm not seeing a lot of climate action right now. I think that that's come to a halt. I'm seeing a lot of just building, building, building in South Maui, and a lot of it's luxury and high-end market housing. So I would think we need to get back to looking at the needs of the people here. And the people are having a really hard time with the housing costs, the rental costs, with finding jobs. And so one of the things that I was working on, and I will credit Alice Lee for putting that committee together. We were working on diversifying the economy and coming up with ideas to try to give our kids something to do. When we send them off to college, they come back here, and then they go, now what? I have to work three tourism jobs at $12 an hour. So these are the things that are important to me. I think we need to keep supporting agriculture, that's our food security. We need to build more 100% affordable housing. We have to stop this 900 luxury homes that will give us 100 affordable homes. And we have limited water and land resources. That needs to go into affordable housing for our local people. We really need to get back to where we're listening to the testifiers, and we're honoring what our communities want, not deciding who we're going to appoint to different positions based on who they're related to or how long we've known them. This is really about community. I spent three years, and we were dedicated to this community. My staff used to tell me, if we don't have 20 things going on at one time, it's a slow day. And we passed a phenomenal amount of legislation. And we created the Youth Council, which I want to bring back. That also ended when I left the council. And I really appreciate your support. KellyKingForMaui.com.
Thank you, that was perfect. You can see how we're enforcing the four-minute rule as best as we can. I was going to ask you real quickly, what is the average price, the median price for a home and for a condo here? Real quickly.
It's hard to say with the condos, because we're in the middle of deciding whether or not they should stay in short-term rentals or not. But it's over a million dollars for the average home. So that may be, that may sound okay to some people on Oahu. We don't have people here in this audience, I think, that are making it a point to afford that.
Okay. It is not okay for people on Oahu. I will represent Oahu. Jocelyn Cruz, come on up.
I have my speech written down just so I can stay on track and be mindful of time. Aloha, my name is Jocelyn Cruz, and I'm running for council because I believe deeply in serving our community. I'm passionate about working toward a future where our island is more self-sustaining, healthy, and resilient. I'm a project manager for a farm here on Maui, and it's opened my eyes a lot to the importance of our food security and the needs there. I'm committed to building a Maui where our people thrive and have access to all the resources they need. And one of my main focuses is food security. Here in Maui Newi and across the state of Hawaii, we import around 90% of our food, and that's despite having a year-round growing season and an abundance of wild game. I believe that this dependency is unnecessary, and I see a future where we're able to provide majority of this locally. Maui Newi Venison is doing excellent work right now in managing our deer population. And I'd love to pursue the federal permits and funding for either the same or similar harvesting units that they're using right now for the wild pig population. This type of wild game management would provide even more fresh locally sourced protein, reduce our reliance on imports, and it helps us to preserve and protect our land. Food security is not just about producing more, it's also about ensuring water management, that water management is equitable and sustainable. In Hawaii, water is a public trust, and I think that its management should reflect that sacred responsibility. I believe water should first go to farmers and to truly affordable housing projects, ensuring that our residents have the resources that they need to grow food and to live dignified lives. I'm honored to be part of Hawaii's Farmers Union, an organization that's dedicated to supporting local agriculture. Two Sundays ago at the annual convention, we all voted on what we were most interested in seeing written into legislation. And the first thing which I absolutely love, they're working on writing legislation that increases the purchasing of local food by our schools, which could be subsidized through regional food hubs. So feeding our kiki, healthy, nutrient-rich food was the most common shared goal, and I think that's so beautiful. Two of the other top priorities are exploring community ownership and management of water systems and advocating for the re-establishment of community-based watershed management with adequate funding. So I'm super grateful to be part of such a forward-thinking group that collaborates with officials to drive real change. Food security goes hand-in-hand with nutrient-dense food. On our farm, we practice regenerative agriculture and agroforestry methods that prioritize soil health. Healthy soil is the foundation for healthy food, and by improving the quality of our soil, we improve the quality of the food that we're serving to our communities. And nutrient-rich soil also absorbs water better, so this helps us mitigate runoff and it protects our natural resources. Restoring and protecting our natural ecosystems is crucial to preventing disasters like wildfires. I'm in full support of organizations like the Kula Community Watershed Alliance. They're focused right now on restoring native plants to the area and eliminating invasive species that contribute to wildfire risks. By investing in these initiatives, we not only safeguard our environment, but we also protect our homes and our livelihoods. And with agriculture, it's not just about feeding ourselves. It can also become a significant source of revenue for our islands. Once we achieve food security, I think it would be a good idea to explore opportunity to export our crops, which would strengthen our economy. Focusing on agriculture also allows us to pivot towards ecotourism, and this would help us attract visitors who appreciate our sustainable practices and support our local farms and businesses. Wow, I almost set a timer, ready? In closing, I believe in the potential of our islands and our people. I'm running for county council so that I can serve you and help to create a future where our food, water, and natural resources are managed in a way that reflects our shared values. I know that we can help our kiki grow up in a Maui that's self-sufficient, healthy, and vibrant. I humbly ask for your support. Mahalas. That's why I wrote it down.
I know this is a complicated question, I'm going to make it as simple as possible. But since the fires and since Alexander and Baldwin selling this land to Mahipono and the efforts to try and develop, to get back to being sustainable, do you think anything really will seriously change? Or is it going to go back to the same old status quo, if you will?
Well, I'm really excited that the East Maui Water Authority is finally getting the support that it needs. It's been two years since we voted that in, and I'm excited to see the community take back water management. It is a bit of a battle with them. Alexander and Baldwin, they're not an agriculture company anymore. They're a real estate company. So I think we need to be very mindful of that. But Gina Young, who's on the board for the, sorry, I want to say East Maui, yeah, East Maui Water Authority, she's amazing. So I'm really excited to see everything that she does, and I think it's going to be really beneficial for our community. And hopefully, a beneficial model where we can get other water authorities and get the community to begin managing and allocating the water and get these leases back from these kind of companies.
No, that was one of them. And it's new, isn't it? Jonathan Lekeke Schur, I think he was on there.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you so much, okay. That was Jocelyn Cruz. Yuki Le Sugimura is coming up next. Come on up.
So yes, I'm Yuki Le Sugimura, and I'm running for reelection. I will tell you, I'm born and raised here on Maui. I grew up here in Wailuku and have done projects in Wailuku Town and have lived, really, the county of Maui's dreams through my projects that I have created and done when I worked with Mayor James Kimoapana in the Office of Economic Development, and I did Wailuku revitalization, helped build the municipal parking structure, helped put the groundwork in there, as well as created, one of my favorite projects was Wailuku First Friday. But a little bit about myself is I've been married for close to 40 years. I have a wonderful husband, and we have one son. I have three other children with grandchildren and live a really wonderful life in Kula, where we have lived for 30 years. So life on Maui is Wailuku as well as up country. I want to start off with, what is the most important thing for us? And that is to rebuild from the wildfires. Up country, if I could start there, we had 26 or so homes that got burnt from the wildfire. They're in the process of trying to rebuild. Very different from what happened in Lahaina. And as we all know, Lahaina with the deaths and really the devastation, it deserved and it had our respect for the people in Kula. And I think that the people in Kula and up country who lost their homes were pretty quiet about what our needs were as we watched Lahaina struggle to try to get housing and do all the essentials. And I think that was responsibility. Right now in Kula, we have at least three homes that are being rebuilt. And it is a process that, everything that we are benefiting from what's happening in Lahaina. We have the watershed project, which is the Kula Watershed Alliance. And they basically took the gulch that burnt the significant amount of homes in Kula, and they created an organization. There's about 400 people that belong to the Kula Watershed Alliance. And their responsibility is to educate the community, bring back the growth that got damaged and destroyed, and to bring in federal funding. So there's NRCS, thank you very much for bringing millions of dollars to try to restore the Pulehui 6,000 acres that were destroyed during the fire there, as well as almost Kula 200 and the gulch. All of that that got burned and is to restore the grounds that were damaged. Really important. So we don't have more damage in the future. And I just want to acknowledge the volunteers who have been helping with that, the families that came forward to try to make this, you know, a viable change for us in Kula. And I want to take this opportunity, if I could, this would be a really good story for CPB. This would be a really good story for you, is to...
Thanks for the plug.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is to talk about all the volunteers that helped during the fire. So we have the Goodfellow, and we had those kind of big contractors that pulled out their heavy equipment and helped build fire breaks. And I always say that if it wasn't for those kinds of people, we would have another disaster in Kihei. Because they built this fire break that stopped the fire from going all the way down to South Maui, as well as, and I didn't realize this till I did a site visit with Maisie Hirono, the Halekala Ranch and the Goodfellows and some others helped save Kula 200. Because a fire was coming down that gulch, and I actually saw how scary it was. So there's all these really, really wonderful people that have made our experience less than life.
I feel like such a jerk standing here trying to grab the microphone.
Oh, is it that?
It is, but I do have a quick follow-up question. I'm curious, you mentioned, it sounded like some folks up in up-country Kula sometimes maybe didn't get the attention that it deserved. Overall, how do you think the media did? Because the media descended from everywhere, not just Civil Beat, not just your newspapers, star advertisers, television, but international. Overall, do you think it gave, broadly speaking, a good job of presenting what happened here?
I do. And because there's so many stories, right? And people would call us, they called Cherry Lee a lot, trying to get stories right after the fire. And I came to a point of saying, you know what? I'm not going to talk to anybody, because I don't have enough information like you would want. But there was so much going on, and I believe the media tried to do as much as they could. I have to credit the administration for creating the Office of Recovery and for providing as much information as we could get. It was chaos after the fire, and just trying to get everybody, you know, safe. Those that lost their homes, there are 98% of the people who lost their homes in West Maui were renters. And so they're the people that went into the hotels. And we occupied a lot of the hotels, had it not been kind of off-season that those hotels were available. So there's some magic that was happening, you know? So please do a story about all the magic.
No, we're always on different stories. This administration or Green administration?
Oh, both. So this administration with the county, they all work together. But Governor Green, he spent $1 million, or millions of dollars just trying to help get the renters housed in hotels.
Yuki Le Sugimura, thank you very much. Next up is Carol Lee Kamakona. I do want to apologize, in some of our material, we forgot to include Lee in our material. I apologize for that. And yeah, thank you very much. Well, I appreciate you saying that. Here you go.
Thank you. Aloha and good evening.
Good evening.
Mahalo, Chad.
Yes.
And Civil Beat, for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. Mahalo for that. So my name is Carol Lee Kamakona, and I am running for the Maui County Council's Kahului residency seat. I am a retired 22-year Navy veteran. My leadership qualities of dignity, respect, accountability, honesty is what I bring to the table. Also, as a single mother of seven children, having to work, listen, hear, I was able to foster good communication skills. And that is also what I will be bringing to the table. This upcoming council has a lot of issues to address. I will try and give you as much as I can of my platform in the allotted time that we have. First and foremost and utmost, affordable housing, residents first. South Maui has approximately 4,000 units coming available within the next couple of years. Not a one is for our people. Heva'ala, not good. We need to take care of our people first. That is why I would like to implement the comprehensive affordable housing plan that was established four years ago, 2020, and has been sitting on the shelf collecting dust, because nothing has really been happening with it. We need housing for our residents. But in order for our residents to allow and afford, afford, not attain, afford housing, they need livable wages. Wages that allow them not only to survive, but thrive. They need to be able to have monies after the bills are paid to maybe go out to dinner a night, or maybe go to the movies, or take the kids to Fun Factory. That is what I'm saying about livable wages. So I will advocate our state legislators to up the timeline for the minimum wage that they have currently implemented. And because of affordable housing, because of our wildfires, God forbid it happened, but FEMA's direct lease program, I totally support 100% rent stabilization. Why? Because before the governor implemented his proclamation that talked about the prices of rent and that landlords could not evict, greedy landlords did evict. They did. Although they weren't Lahaina survivors that were evicted, there were non-survivors that were impacted, and I am one of them. I was indirectly impacted because the greedy landlord wanted the money. With the mayor's proposal for the short-term conversion, totally 100% support. The A1, A2 district, yes, residential. It needs to stay residential. Our residents need to know that they don't have to worry about people who don't belong in their neighborhoods that are there. So yes, I approve and I agree with the mayor's proposal. Diversified economy, tech industry, film industry, and of course, our healthcare workers. We need to take care of them, because with good healthcare workers means a good, healthy Maui. Yes? So diversified economy is resilient economy. Yes, I'm going to quit right now. Thank you very much. Mahalo again for allowing me to be here. I didn't get to all my proposals, however. My vision and platform cannot come to fruition without your vote on November 5th. We need a council that will put residents first over developers.
I don't have any follow-up questions. Thank you, Carol Lee. John Pele, you're up next. And I appreciate the applause, but just kind of be respectful that everybody, sometimes people bring their supporters here. We're trying to be even keeled as best as we can. And ultimately, a lot of this probably won't make it always onto the audio, but I just want to be fair about that. We're not doing a television commercial here. So John, come on up.
Stage is yours. No, we're doing a television commercial. Aloha, everybody. My name is John Pele, from the island of Molokai. Thank you, Civil Beat, for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I live on the west side of Molokai with my wife, Nani. Little bit about myself. After coming back from University of Hawaii for a few years, I started, I actually started just working on Molokai. Started as a busboy at Sheraton, Sheraton, Molokai at the time, when I was young. Through the years, I've worked in the tourism industry, maybe about 25 years total, off and on. I was the director of purchasing at one point. Then they asked me to come, Sheraton asked me to come over to the room side of the hotel industry. And eventually, I made my way up to a general manager of hotel operations. So that was just through hard work, and I really enjoyed it. And I thought I was really good at it, so you know, obviously I had success at it. After that, I was a condominium manager for 14 years on the island. After that, I was a condominium manager for 14 years on the island of Molokai. And I also owned two businesses. Me and my wife and some friends started a grocery store that we ran for 15 years. So there's some business experience there. And we still currently own a restaurant in Hotel Molokai that's celebrated seven years. One of my biggest achievements from that restaurant that I like to focus on is I was able to bring my nephew home to Molokai. He was my chef. He had gone away to Oregon, to culinary school, ended up in Oahu, working at a place called Fresh Catch, running the whole show over there. And by me being in that restaurant, we were able to bring him home, which leads me into why I'm running. Unfortunately, my only child who went to Kamehameha, Shamanad graduated with two degrees. 10 days after that, she told me she was leaving because she couldn't afford to be here. So you hear a lot of the candidates talk about the future, our future, our kids' future, what we worry about. I'm going to tell you guys, it's real because I live it every day. I've been living it for 10 years. She's been gone for 10 years. And so in 2014, she saw the writing on the wall. She said, Dad, I can't afford to be in Hawaii. I want a quality of life, so I'm leaving. That never sat well with me, still doesn't sit well with me. So wanted to get involved a little bit. So in 2017, I applied to be a multi-commissioner. And I was appointed as a planning commissioner. I spent five years on the Molokai planning commission, kind of getting a little bit of feel, not what the council does, but just kind of getting my feet wet on how government works. And that was a great experience. And then as I learned about the problem, especially with housing, I wanted to be around the front for council because housing is what's important to me. How do we insulate ourselves? How do we create housing opportunities for our local residents? We're all saying it, but how do we insulate ourselves from this international market that we have? Because we can't compete locally with the kind of money that's floating out there. They can come in with a million dollars. I have a story of a gentleman who wanted to buy a luxury home. He went through Maualani, he saw a nice Maualani once, he bought three homes. So that doesn't sit well with me. Because that's three homes that are local families. I mean, they're expensive, they could, you're taking away inventory. So we need to kind of insulate ourselves from that. And last week, or one minute earlier, last week, we had, I watched the land use committee, Housing and Land Use Committee, and our director of housing and our director of planning actually working together. First time I've seen that in our county. And really working together on how to figure out things. And they mentioned a program like Kauai. Kauai has a great way of building affordable housing where the government, the county does everything. Title the land, build the roads, put in the infrastructure, and then they hand it shovel-ready to developers. And they can keep it in affordability because they always have a hand in it. Leasehold these rentals. And it's a great way to insulate ourselves from this, all this money that's out there in this world and keep our local families here so they can have an opportunity to stay here. Granted, if your kids grow and they want to go explore the world, I'm all for that too. But my daughter wishes she was home. She wishes she was home. Every day she tells me, Dad, I wish I could have raised my kids and learn their culture and keep their culture, but I just couldn't do it. So that's kind of why I'm running. So thanks for your time. That's all you standing there.
You mentioned you worked at the Sheraton. You hear people say this, I'd love to hear your response. There's too many tourists that come here and they're causing too much damage. What do you say to someone who says that?
Well, that's the reality and it can be overwhelming. Tourism can be overwhelming and I just want to say it was good to me. Tourism was good to me. I was a productive citizen that allowed me to buy my house. I sent my daughter to college, started a business, all from working in the tourism ministries. And don't get me wrong, we can all get better. They can get better at what they do. We need to find solutions with them to support them so they can be part of the solution instead of the enemy. And they need to know that. And I think they do know that. It's just we got, yeah, there can always be a balance. There needs to be a balance. So I believe in that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John, and thanks for pointing out, yeah, John Pele. Just a reminder, Megan is back there with the one minute and that's a good thing to kind of keep aware of. And we're doing the best to manage the time. It's going pretty well, actually. And I'm very pleased that everyone has kept their comments pretty succinct. Loriann Aquintas, did you make it in? Yes, come on in. I know you were running late. You can correct my pronunciation right now if you'd like.
Well, aloha, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, guys. Mahalo akua for this blessing, beautiful day that we have. Mahalo, everybody, for your time. Mahalo to everybody running for office and who is in office. You guys have been very, very supportive of me and each other. I just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for having this opportunity. Where I'm from, from right here, guys, true Maui boy. My tutu raised me in different regions on this island from all of up-country, from Paia through Kula into Wailuku, Kihei, Lahaina. So that is where I'm from. Why I'm running? In 2018, Maui Surf Culture was a Lahaina-born business in 505 Front Street, either otherwise called Break Wall or Kamehameha Beach Park. I was able to run with two surfboards and a truck. In the evening, I worked at the Fisalere Lual so I could pay my rent and my bills. I got together a solid team to work, work blood, sweat, and tears in that park, in our truck, and to get a van and then a box van. And we got successful to be able to get a brick and mortar building off 113 and 602 Front Street, right across Camp 3 School where the big parking lot is, where everybody parks and got to pass by our love and aloha and our music and our shocked and smiles every day to go on to the next. From there, I was able to really put pride into our block, into our town, and collaborate, facilitate collaboration between the DLNR and other organizations. We put together for the youth in the community to be able to have their kids and come down and be happy to clean. And also, we put in programs where we could teach boxing, capoeira, jiu-jitsu, as well as surfing, paddleboard, canoe surfing, skate competitions, fishing competitions. We put all these things in there so that everybody could have a place and hope and look up to us and be like, you know what? I can get my own business, I can do that. I was able to make sure payday came every day responsibly, fiscally making sure everybody got their paycheck and to pay for their bills. So why I'm running is for that. On a county level, I can provide that with my experience and my fiscal responsibilities. Few issues that we're tackling, that we're having is safeguarding our community and the disaster resilience. I'm living proof of that. 2018, I lived in Waikuli, boom, had to move, firecave. 2023, changed our lives for everyone all over the world. And now we're at 2024. Did we have an action plan on August 9, 2023? 2018, do we have one now? I don't know, but that is something that my experience is as well. And yeah, we lost a lot of things. We lost town, we lost a lot, we lost our, everybody lost something. And I didn't lose my heart, I didn't lose my family, and that's why I'm here. Another issue we got is, we all went through it. Maui had a tough time. You guys remember the pandemic, we all remember that. It got real divisive with politics. It got real divisive with your opinion of a mask or vaccinations. Then the fire came. And we all saw how Maui came together. Everybody was loving aloha and light. And then all of a sudden, a few months later, it trickled down to if you're a homeowner and you chose to do whatever you want, you had the freedom to do what you want, and you did decide to have short-term rentals, all of a sudden that became divisive and that hit us hard, that hit everybody. I've been walking around and tourists ask me, is it okay? I heard we're not supposed to be here. This message that you don't like us. And if people are afraid to own houses and stuff, we don't need divisive leadership over here anymore. That's why I'm here. I can bring that because I've been living it, I've been living here in Maui. Thank you, guys.
I've been hearing this for years. Hawaii is terrible to small business, struggling to get by. If you get into office, what can be done at the county level to help guys like you trying to run a surf operation? Just one thing maybe that the government could do better?
One thing? Well, we saw it in the news. A year later, fires happened and I seen restaurants opening in Lahaina in the back by Safeway and all that. And hey, if we don't like the owners, that's one thing. But they were, had their open signs. And then we're finding them and making it hard. So one thing that we could do, we could actually make it not hard for our businesses. If you want to put Hawaiian kings in office, then we could implement by putting in grants for everybody, giving an opportunity for Maui people, Maui residents, to be able to get from setbacks and give us opportunities to do that. It wasn't easy. If it was easy, we'd all be here, right? Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Loriann Aquintas.
I am running for West Maui County Council.
Thank you so much. Next up is Alice Lee.
Aloha, everyone, and good evening. Thank you. So, sorry, trying to recover from a call. I'm running for the Wailuku, Waheke, Waikuku seat. And I've been on the council now, going on six years. I have been also a housing director. And in the late 90s, I was also on the council before that. So I think I bring a lot of experience to government today. I think we have a wonderful council. I think all of us could probably do a little bit better. But we have worked really hard. And one of the things about being on the council is the ability, if you want to be successful, you have to have the ability to work with other people. You have to have that skill to build consensus. That's very important. Because not everybody thinks alike. Not everybody has the same backgrounds or priorities. So the idea is try and bring people together to achieve a common good. And one of the priorities for me, of course, is housing. And last year, we passed the bill called the Ohana Assistance Program. I think that this is going to be a program that will provide hundreds upon hundreds of rental housing for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And this program is about helping someone get funding. It doesn't change zoning, it's all about funding. So let's say you have a house in Kahului and we all know that those lots are about 10,000 square feet. You could put an attached or detached unit. You can get funding from the county, up to $100,000. But in return, you cannot use that unit for short-term rentals. You cannot charge exorbitant rents. It has to be within HUD guidelines. And it has to be affordable forever. So this is something that the council did as a group that's really going to change the landscape with regard to housing, no matter what happens in the future. So this, in addition to this, we are also working very hard to restore and rebuild Lahaina. And one of the things that I've been, all of us have been working on, is to build a West Maui hospital. Because it's, the idea is horrible that they don't have that kind of service there. And so we're going to work very, very hard to make that a reality. And of course, as you heard earlier, we're working on trying to build escape routes, trying to make the landscape more resilient, trying to protect the cultural significant areas. There's so much to do and not that much time to do it. So all of us need to work together, get back in the fray, work hard, not only for Lahaina, but for everywhere in Maui County. So again, I'm Alice Lee, running for council. And I would appreciate your support and your vote. Aloha.
I wish I could give a prize for the first person who kept their remarks under four minutes. But we're doing great on time. I do have one question, and this comes up for a lot of people. The legislature, the House and Senate, there's no term limits. There are term limits for the counties. Where do you stand on term limits? You know, the general argument is it's experience versus fresh voices. Your thoughts on term limits?
Well, we do have term limits for the county council.
Right.
And for the mayor. So which term limits are you talking about?
Do you think it's, are you glad that you have those term limits? Or would you add that they were lifted and people could serve longer?
I think it's, as a practical matter, it's working. Term limits are working. I don't think people can or want to work 20 years in a row. I really, this isn't quite a grind. This job is not easy. So working, you know, for 10 years or two terms, whatever it is, is enough. It really is.
Thanks for taking that question because there's a lot of lawmakers at the state legislature that have chosen not to vote on term limits. And of course, as you pointed out, the counties have done that. Thank you, Alice Lee. Next up is Naraboom. There you go.
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for being here.
Good evening.
Aloha, my name is Naraboom again, and I'm running for the Makua Haiku Paei seat of the Maui County Council. I'm a singer, a voice teacher, an activist. I am co-founder of the Maui Housing Bui that advocates for renters' rights and educates both renters and landlords on what those rights are. I also work for Wisdom Circles Oceania, which is a nonprofit that brings therapeutic arts and music programs not only to fire survivors, but also those people, the community organizers on the front lines that need often just to put the weight down for a little bit. So that's one of my many jobs. Obviously, I care deeply about this community I grew up in. I graduated from St. Anthony. And, you know, driving here, I watched the sun fall behind the mountains. And I remember hiking up to the cross there to paint it my senior year. I remember how much rainfall the mountains used to get. And right now, even though there are people that say that we have a lot of water, Puukukui has, used to have about 400 inches of rain every year. And in the last decade, that's dropped to half. So the water is not there and we should all be alarmed. I am absolutely worried about, you know, my children's children and seven generations from now. But in actuality, I'm petrified about now. And my son just turned 18 last month. There's no way he can move out. I feel your pain, John. Yeah, I hear it. Every time you say it, I feel it too. We need to do better for our people right now. I don't know if you've heard, but FEMA's direct lease program that has made these rents so very high has been extended for another year. And with that, I would like to see us introduce the idea of them paying less as this tide stretches out to help normalize the rents that we have right now. I want to see the county bring legislation into place now that controls our rents, whether it is whether that is the county setting limits of how much a person can charge per room of a place or some other square footage, whatever it is. Something must be done and it must be done now. In conjunction with that, you know, we think about, well, we talk about affordable housing and building and building and building, but we don't have time to wait for building and we don't have time to find the water for it. We need answers now, we need solutions now. The time is now. I want to see us treat our houseless better. I want safe spaces for the houseless community. If we learn anything from these fires, it's that any one of us can be exactly where they are. We need kauhales and puukukus, safe spaces for them to sleep. I am in support of the phasing out of short-term rentals. I was part of the crew that went to the capital with Lahaina strong. I marched with Unit Air Local 5 and ILWU yelling at the top of our lungs to be heard, to house our people. I care very deeply. I care very deeply for all of you and all of us. Again, my name is Nora Boone. If you'd like to learn more, you can go to voteintheboom.com. Please vote for all nine council seats, and we need to please check the boom box.
Short-term rentals, I'm sure you've heard the counterargument for allowing those, which is, that's, that's money for a family. It's not just Airbnb, but it's trying to, as you say, make ends meet and not have their kids move to the mainland. What do you say that to somebody who's, who may have their short-term rental converted to a long-term, perhaps against their will? There's, there's talk about legal action, as you probably have heard.
So a few things. I mean, the phase out doesn't have to happen immediately, but we do need housing now. If we had regulations where, doing something like Atlanta, Georgia, where people are only allowed two vacation rentals and one must be older occupied, I love that idea. I think that we should get STRs out of residential areas. I ran, this is my second time running. The first time I ran, one of my ideas was I wanted to ban short-term rentals within a mile of school zones. I have two sisters that live very close to a school. They have vacation rentals on three sides of those. Keeps them up at night, challenges the sense of community in the neighborhood. A few of them were closed. The short-term rentals, they were converted, and all of a sudden, their kids playing together, riding bicycles, doing what kids are supposed to do. Now granted, they also have to put out cones so that the tourists know to slow down in those areas. It's totally disruptive that way. But if it's limited, I think short-term rentals can work, but not in the way that it has been and not at the detriment of our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nora Boone. We have four more people to go. Before I bring Tom Cook up here, just a reminder, I know a lot of you have brought materials, campaign materials. We're a nonprofit. We cannot be a party to that. If you want to distribute materials, please, we set up a table outside. We can't have you doing it on civil beat, if you will, with our imprint tour on it. We could, cannot allow that. But you are welcome, as people leave, to spread that material around. So asking the honor of that. Tom Cook, come on up.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me? Aloha, and it's great to see a full house. It's so good to see everybody who's actually engaged and, and involved in this process. My name is Tom Cook. I want to thank you for the invitation. My name is Tom Cook. I'm the current South Maui County Council Representative. I'm running for reelection. I've been on Maui for 52 years. I married a girl from Makua. I'm a father. I have five children and four grandchildren. I'm a carpenter by trade. One, one thing about me, I homesteaded on property on Avila Road. I had an inheritance from my grandfather. I had $50,000, and I just bought land. And we lived in a tent. We lived in a shed. I built a little house, and I built a bigger house. My boy Kamale just turned 48 yesterday. He was born on, he was born on Maui Memorial, but he grew up on the property, and my grandson Josiah and his wife Amber are on the property. Rain catchment, lived off the grid, kerosene lights, I had a milk cow, very self-sufficient. So I'm just sharing that with you. When it comes to be environmentally sensitive, environmentally aware, sustainability, I've lived it and I understand it, and it's not just an act. I've bought one piece of property the entire time I've been on Maui, and my son has it. I currently live in Kihei for the last 16 years, going on 17 years. I've lived in four different homes that we rent. I understand the terror and the fear of having to find a rental. So I'm just saying, my goal and objective of being on the county is to, council, is to bring my experience as a builder and a, and as a builder, when you're a builder, you're not just like shovels and hammers. Team building, bringing a group of people together, collaboration, which is a wide variety of people working together for a common goal, being able to determine off of plans and things, transferable information so people know what to do and how to do it. I've advanced in my career so that I can do the estimating, the, all the various aspects of it. So I think that my role in the county now, besides being mature, I'm going to be 70 at Christmas, and having a lot of experience as being an employee, an employer, a father, a husband, I think I bring balance to the county council, and I'm very, very passionately convinced that we can build homes and manage, develop our, and people don't like the word develop. Develop is not a bad word. Develop is just like putting stuff together. We can improve our water infrastructure, our wastewater, and all of the utilities, and being sensitive and to the environment. It is, we're not, not wanting to exploit things. We want to utilize things in an efficient manner to benefit of everybody. You want housing up country, there's so many people that own land. Families, lots of families own land and basically, but they don't have water, so they can't build. They could build affordable homes, but we need to be able to provide the water. Lahaina, West Side has water issues. Kihei has water issues. I believe that those issues are solvable. I think that we have the people in the government who are very conscientious and willing to work with the community to make this happen. So my name is Tom Cook. Friendsoftomcook.com is my website. I would really like to spend time to talk to any and all of you. I like talking with people. I want to be you to understand who I am. I want to understand what your interests are. I'd like to listen to what other people's ideas are, what other people's solutions are, because that's how we grow. That's how I stay young.
You sound a little defensive when you bring up developers. You have a development background. I hear a lot of talk about this council being divided between pro-development and, if you will, anti-development concerns about the environment. Nora just talked about water. You mentioned West Maui as well. How do you reach compromise with such very different principles and with so much at stake?
Education, education. There is not as much division between us as is like built up. What do we want? We want to basically have our homes and a community, and a community that's for our local residents, based on local values, not being exploited by the global market. I've always been against speculative real estate. I was always against transient vacation rentals in neighborhoods, like from the very beginning. I think that that was letting the genie on of a bottle. So education and collaboration, and collaboration is over, is used a lot. What I mean is like, when I say listen to you, I mean that. It's like getting to know each other and understanding how much we have in common. So if you want to build something, you need people to know how to build it. We have carpenters. We have all the tradesmen. You need people to be able to finance it. That's bankers. You need to understand the insurance industry, how to do a surety bond and, and other types of bonding. So it is, it's a whole thing. You're not just going to go, oh, I want housing. There's a process. And that's knowing how to do it. So I think people label it, and they come to preconceived ideas, the overdevelopment, the speculation, the lack of respect for the community, the lack of respect for the culture, and that name sticks to it. That ain't me.
Got it. Tom Cook, thank you very much. We have the same problem in journalism. We have three more candidates to go, and just a reminder, I'll have some closing remarks, then you can come up and talk story. Plenty of food, plenty of water, sodas, juice, help yourself. Next up is James Forrest.
All right, I'm going to keep my own tone. Howdy. I am James Forrest, and I'm running for county council. I live in Waileku. I just wanted to piggyback off some of the comments that were made. I promise I will not bring balance to the council. I will put locals first, my friends. I will enact renters, renters stabilization. I will file that bill on the first day. I will be pro-locals and anti-luxury development. The choices are so easy, folks. The voters have spoke over and over again, all right? I like to say, quote Alika Atai, "We don't need new plans. We need new leaders." Let's start off with the comprehensive affordable housing plan, all right? We paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for this plan, and it's a great plan. It has hundreds of ideas in it. We've only enacted a handful of them, and that was particularly because of our progressive majority. I think we definitely need to restore the progressive majority, and we need to establish a supermajority. To quote Alika Atai one more time, "Enough already, guys. The answers are so easy. It's all right in front of you." Now, I want to thank Civil Beat. Civil Beat has followed these stories for, I think, a nice 10 years now. And it's sad that it goes back that far. If you look at the coverage of the Water Authority, for example, that was a charter amendment that got passed, overwhelming support, and the, the East Maui Water Authority is just barely getting started right now. It's been opposed by the developer-friendly council the entire way. They put up roadblocks. They, they caused a bogus ethics issue against Gina Young. Those are all delay tactics to basically deny the public their will. They voted for this, and the council has said, "You guys don't know what you're talking about. We, we do, and we're going to have your public water trust sold to private venture firms." Okay? All right. So there was a great story today in Civil Beat, and had my, focused with my, my sheet here. Now, my sheet is about campaign donations, all right? Campaign donations are public record, and it's an important part of politics in Maui. It's an important, important part of politics all over the US. You want to know who is funding campaigns and, you know, who, who is taking money from the luxury developers that we're trying to fight against? All right, when you're talking about wanting to support affordable housing, but you're taking money from luxury developers, it causes the public not to trust you. All you gotta do, don't take the money. You have a choice as a politician and a candidate, all right? Whenever someone approaches you with $2,000, you can say, "No, thanks. Donate that to charity," or something like that. Whenever someone, you find out that an organization has tricked and like created a new name like For Maui Tomorrow or something, you can return their $2,000. So we all have choices to make, and I choose to not take corporate money. I choose to put the locals first. That's why I signed the Our Hawaii Pledge. That's why I'm endorsed by the Kanaka Movement. That's why I'm endorsed by the Ohana Candidates. You have a clear choice to make. The lines have been drawn in the sand. We don't have political parties, but we have people who have taken money from luxury developers and people who are fighting them. And we're fighting them for you. Thank you. Please look up my website, votefor2024.
Okay. Nope, I think we're good, but yeah, not everyone.
He gets a question. We stopped with all of the applauding during the speeches. I think it's really inappropriate.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can all applaud that remark right now. That's a good one. Let's, let's cut the applause. I'm not going to ask James a question because he pretty much had his own prof, you know, you could talk to him outside. He's got his signs and everything, but, but I do thank you for crediting Civil Beat and its work. We do agree that campaign finance is an important issue, and we think that's one reason why all of you read Civil Beat, and I do appreciate that.
You're not going to ask anyone else a question. It's not fair.
Okay, I'll take that. That's fair criticism. Let's move on. We have two more candidates. Tasha Kama, come on up.
So I do, I do want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Because your format tonight allows each and everyone of us to tell everyone who we are. So that means I get to define who I am and not let other people define what they think of me, what they believe I am, and what they, what they think I should or should not be doing. So I want to let you all know, I am a widow, and I've been a widow for three years. But prior to my husband passing, we had been married 51 years. To me, that's a milestone, because anytime you can stay married more than 25 years, that means you are successful in something. Even if you fail in a whole lot of other things, the most important thing is your marriage. And in our 51 years of marriage, we had 11 children. And those, and eight of those 11 children produced 33 grandchildren. And out of those 33 grandchildren, two of them produced five of my great-grandchildren. The years that I spent with my husband, she'd tell you that I'm faithful and I'm dedicated and I'm loyal. The way I handle my marriage and my family is the same way I handle things that I have to decide upon in this county, that I am faithful and I am loyal to all of you, no matter what other people say. What people can say, they can say all they want, but when you're in that seat and you have to make a decision, and you know all the information that you have is based upon those decisions, you make it. And sometimes, as hard and difficult as it is, you still make that decision. Because it's not about all of the loud voices that are out there, but it's about the silent voices that don't have time to come and testify, that don't have the time to come and write a letter to you. But you see them on the streets, you see them in your stores, you see them at the post office. Your job as a council member is never over, because you're always a council member to people as long as you are in elected office. And sometimes I have to excuse myself because I have a 36-year-old daughter with downs. And when it's time for me to shop for her, and she doesn't want to wait around and listen to me, "Yow, yow, yow," she says, "Mom, let's go, let's go." And I have to say, "I'm sorry, but this is her day. This is her day." And she gets my attention. So I leave the conversation and I take care of my family. I, in the past six years, I missed a couple of weddings, a couple of anniversaries, a couple of baby parties, and a whole bunch of other family things. And I decided this year that I wasn't going to let so much of that of my work interrupt my family time. As I get older, my children, my grandchildren get older, I want to spend time with them. And so what I do in our county and the way I make decisions is always based upon facts, information, and research. I have a great team of people in my office that does great research. We're always reaching out to people to help me understand what things I don't understand, and always listen to people. I may not always take their advice, but I'll take some of it, and I will use it. But I want you all to know that I do care about you, and I am really concerned about things that are going on from, from the top of the mountain to the bottom of the ocean and everything in between. I was raised by my grandparents on a piece of land that they owned way back before Kahala Hilton was built, the golf course was there. But that is my hometown. That is my roots. But these are my children's roots today, and they love this place just as much as I do. And every time I make a decision and they watch it on Facebook, they're always saying, "Mom, I'm with you, and we're praying for you." I raise my children to be loving, kind, and gentle so that no matter where they live, that they always take aloha with them, and I will too. Thank you.
Looks like Alice Lee kept it under four minutes, so I, I am going to follow because I was sort of, come on up. I do have a question for you, if you don't mind. In all your years, you said that you'd like to study the facts, get the information. You have people helping you out. Can you ever remember an issue in which you changed your mind, something that you used to feel one way, then you changed your mind because maybe new evidence came to light?
Well, six years. I don't know if I changed my mind about stuff in all the years. But, yeah, I don't think I could ever. I can't remember if I could.
That's all right.
But I could if I ever, I mean, I would.
You wouldn't be afraid?
No.
If you were presented with new information?
No.
Okay.
No. Thank you.
You're welcome. I was going to ask about the 33 grandchildren too, but I didn't quite know, I was going to ask how you feel about social media, but we'll save that for another day. You mentioned Facebook. And last but not least, you already saw her standing up, and it's Keany Rollins Fernandez, come on up.
Mahalo, Chad. Aloha. Good evening. Good evening. Aloha, ahi, ahi. Mahalo, Civil Beat for hosting, for everyone for attending and everyone online that will be watching. Ova'o o Kiani Rollins Fernandez, hekupa aina o Molokai. I'm currently the council member for Molokai, asking for your continued support. My background, I'm a Molokai High graduate. I have degrees in law and my MBA. I worked at the legislature before the council and I've now been at the council for almost six years. I am a policymaker right now who is really a community organizer at the core. I'm collaborative with diverse groups of community members as well as state and federal elected officials and nonprofits. And I have an amazing team. Okay, so I'm going to aim for breadth, not depth. My list, my bullets started off short, but now it's really long. So here we go. My priorities are all of our priorities. I believe in good government, transparency, accessibility, accountability, and what does that look like? Strong campaign finance laws, doing everything possible to ensure everyday people are centered at decision-making and have an opportunity to voice their mana'o. It looks like online testimony with sign-in when you sign up because that is annoying when you have to do 24 hours before the meeting. Facebook Live of our meetings and regular town hall meetings on Molokai. My priority is also the Lahaina recovery, of course, including the Lahaina Community Land Trust, ensuring that they have adequate funding and partnerships on Molokai are aina-back, water-back and energy independence initiatives. High priorities are food security, biosecurity, environmental and cultural protections, including centering 'olele haua'i as an official language of this place. Aho'ua management style to prevent fires and increase biosecurity, community cohesion, particularly ensuring those with ancestral kuleana to this place not be displaced. Housing, but not, but not just building more, reclaiming existing housing and preserving them for residents and keeping them affordable. Reclaiming our property, reclaiming means through property tax incentives and phasing out of short-term rentals in the apartment district, reining in the tourism industry and luxury development. Too much is too much. You can learn more about me at votekiani.com. I'm also on Facebook and Instagram. I am running because I love our community, our lahu'i. I am good at this job. I understand systems and how to improve them. I am an effective champion for our people and I ask for your vote. I have two corrections. Was it my turn?
No.
Okay. I have, okay, so I wanted to correct a couple of things for the, I strongly support term limits and I would like to see term limits on oha trustees and that's something that I'm going to be working on this session. But I really support term limits at the state as well. I think that the senators and the representatives, you should have like 10 years, like how we do because they need to make room for our emerging leaders. We need to make space for our OPO because they are our future. And with a question with the mayor, TBR, though. So it's not a forced conversion to long-term rental. It's just a change in zoning so that TBR is not permissible in the apartment district. So it won't be an eminent domain style of taking, forcing them to long-term rent. If they leave it vacant, that's, you know, a part of the gamble, but we will be working on the taxes to incentivize residential use and disincentivize investment use.
Thank you for the correction on SCR. It's, can get so confusing. Each county has different rules, different laws. We have our own problems on a wahoo, believe you me. But I appreciate that. I do have one quick question for you, being from Molokai. How is the air service today? Is that really being addressed right now?
Mahalo for that question. We get it all the time. Yeah, John? So tonight, we, our county Department of Transportation is hosting the, a meeting on the feasibility study that our council provided funding to do to look at alternate transportation on and off the island. Through ferry, we used to have a ferry. It stopped in 2016. And so now we're looking at whether it would make sense for the county to manage this because it was private before. And so our community is giving feedback on how soon we would do it, what kind of ship it would be, where it would land on Maui while Lahaina Harbor is being rebuilt. If we go to Ma'alaya or Kahului, Kahului looks like a no. But it would likely go to Ma'alaya, which would take more time. We have to also factor in the cost and if that's going to include lots of subsidies. And in order for the ferry, you know, to be successful, it has to be competitive with Mokulele and, and that would require subsidies. So with the federal government, you know, bringing that in and, you know, hoping that we get another airlines for competition and supporting those in our community that are interested in raising up our own and having our own airlines.
That was Kiani Rollins Fernandez. Thank you very much. Just a couple of points. Every candidate for the Maui County Council completed a Q and A for Civil Beat. Thank you. That was the first time, I think, any county council, might may not be the first time, but pretty darn close. And you can read those. They're on our website. So if you didn't get your questions answered, they did address things like term limits and water use and so forth. That's all on our website. This forum will be posted online as soon as we can get it up there. Remember that the ballots should be in your mailbox by tomorrow. You actually got some today?
Yeah.
Yay! That's great. And the deadline to vote is obviously get it in before November the 5th. It's coming up very soon. There are drop boxes, I'm sure, in Maui County. I want to thank you all, all the candidates who were able to participate tonight and would please give everyone a round of applause.